UB services that we're providing. We have approximately 24,488 customer accounts. That's a 4% increase above last year, a .4% increase above last year. You'll notice that our bill bills mailed monthly has declined. We've been pushing a campaign to get electronic billing. And we've also been pushing people to start using our online tools. So you'll see that our electronic bills have actually went up by 23.9%. We're going to soon run a campaign. When you sign up for an electronic bill, you get a one-time $5 credit to your bill. So we're going to be releasing a campaign in the next few weeks to help promote that electronic bill. Because obviously, when we're not mailing a bill and they're receiving it electronically, we're saving on postage, printing, and services associated with a third-party biller. And then obviously, walk-in customers are way down because we're not seeing walk-in customers at this time. And then ACH customers went up. Actually, it should be going down. That's a 2.1% decrease. Sorry about that, is an estimate. I personally believe that due to COVID-19, people have stopped their automatic debits to their accounts. So that, depending on their personal situation. Service connections and monthly disconnections. This number in previous years for service connections monthly, it decreased 9.6%, but we're not doing disconnects currently for, as a result of COVID-19. So those service connections, when we reconnect, were a part of those numbers as well. So obviously, they're correlated to that, to one another. So if we're not doing disconnects, we're not reconnecting. So we're not turning people's water back on. So I wanted to highlight some accomplishments that we've had. The finance team continues to monitor expenditures and payments so that the adherence to policies are followed. The controls put in place decrease the amount of errors and will contribute towards less difficult audit and budget processing each year. This one is one of the major reasons we were able to add to the unassigned fund balance in achieving the goal of having a 25% reserve. Is because, again, as I stated at the previous meeting last, on July 1st, that there's a review process that's pretty thorough that's taking place, that happens in finance and in the city administrator's office. One of the highlights that we did with the last bid that we put out was an electronic e-bid on Demandstar. So Demandstar is our bidding service. And we did it electronically. And we had 17 responses, actually 16, one didn't complete it. And they were able to submit all their documents electronically. We did our bid opening electronically. And that, we did our bid opening through a Zoom meeting as well. That was one of the great things that has come out of this COVID-19 process that we've experiencing is the technology use. One of the other accomplishments is related to the evaluated sources that we used and the piggybacks. So we've eliminated the use of evaluated sources and increased the piggybacks. And this will allow for smooth and efficient operations within the departments. It eliminates the need for quoting multiple vendors, processing multiple requisitions and quotes, and can expedite the process of vendor selection if the expenditure thresholds are above the 25,000 threshold. So some examples of the piggyback that we have reviewed and approved are fire alarm systems, traffic equipment, pavement, restrooms at Northwest Recreation, Florida Sheriff's Association vehicle purchasing, street sweeping, and the utility rate study that we're entered in, and the stormwater inliner rehab. So those are some of the areas that we've done significant, that we've started these projects in 2020 that impacts our expenditures and our processing of documents. Obviously, we completed the 2019 audit 30 days ahead of last year. And we also, in 2020, in December, we opened the Billy Dean Community Center and closed out the CDBG grant. And in addition to grants, we hold monthly meetings. However, due to COVID-19, we're no longer holding monthly meetings. So we have actually, Dr. Jackson has created a grants newsletter. And we are doing better at tracking projects and grants. And as previously noted in the utility billing department, I sent you guys last week, I believe, or yeah, last week, the video that was created with the support of IT and Tremaine for the Census Utility Billing Customer Analytics Portal. And they, excuse me, they did a great job. Kelly and Tremaine did a great job. And that will be being released very soon. Thank you for you guys that had provided feedback to us. And another item that we've done in utility billing in the last month is we've updated our special payment agreements procedures to meet the code of ordinances. And we completed our training with admins that I spoke of on, at the July 1st meeting today and yesterday. Some goals that we have. We need to, as promised, we're working on a draft for policy updates for the procurement policy and P-card policy, as noted at the July 1st meeting. We would like to continue to improve fixed assets and work with the departments and administration to identify formal bid priorities for the upcoming year. Obviously, the budget drives this. So the departments that are issuing requesting items, we have to set priorities as a team. And then training, we will continue to do training for the entire city for procurement and grant training. Last year, we did just procurement training with all of the departments, anybody that was impacted. This year, we're going to add grant training to that as a result of the changes that we made during the process of the single audit for the auditors. Because we learned a lot this year going through the single audit since we had a state and federal single audit as a part of our 29 audit, 2019 audit. And then as we start to investigate and evaluate utility billing, we're going to continue to make improvements and make changes as we deem necessary to make sure those procedures and policies are in line and that we ensure we're in compliance with our bond covenants. So the next slide is just by function within the finance and utility billing department, the duties and tasks that we cover. This is a busy style slide. This is mainly for your information purposes only. But it's a high-level description of what we do in the financing utility billing department. And that leads us to our finance department line item changes. This highlights all the changes that were done within our line item budgets on the operating side. So I do want to note that on the finance side, after the review with administration, that we have about $30,000 worth of cuts between professional services and the training line item. And professional services, we're eliminating the investment advisor and the bond counsel that was highlighted there, that's 30,000. And then the AICPA membership is being removed from memberships in the finance budget. Are there any questions before I go to the utility billing line items?
Any questions?
The only question I have is your resource asks, right? Your wish list for those items. And it's just, I think it's two resources, right? And for 159, and that's total wages. Is there any opportunity? So we talked yesterday, we, you know, this asset management. And I'm keen on the word asset because one of the positions is fixed assets person. And we realized how expensive that solution was yesterday from a technology standpoint. Would a resource like this, if they're solely dedicated to asset, fixed asset management, that sort of stuff, is there opportunities to leverage a position like that so that you reduce the need for a system in the very short term?
In the very short term, possibly. I think that fixed asset system, maybe Vlad can expand on it. It's greater, it's for a greater infrastructure. And from what they need from a utility standpoint is one of the main things, I believe, on it. And obviously, my department is not going to get into the level of maintenance that they're going to need in public services for that, for that service.
Yeah, fair point. Yeah, that's a fair point. No need to expand, yeah. Yeah, yeah, makes sense.
Yeah, so I'm merely tracking. And when it comes to infrastructure, it's at a higher level than it is for what they need from their tracking purposes for maintenance and improvements.
Okay, understandable. Thank you.
Are any of the grants that we currently have, are any of those reoccurring?
Some of those that are on that list is reoccurring. The burn grants are reoccurring. The FERDAP grants, you apply for them as the projects become available, so they are not requiring. The land and water conservation is new. The USTA is the tennis court grant, that's like a one-time grant. The recycling partnership is a one-time grant. The Orange County Care Stimulus Pass Through is the funding from Orange County for COVID-19. The DOT grants are new grants this year that we just secured through PD. So I don't know if they're going to be reoccurring or not. They're new, they're new grants.
All right. And then my last question was, are we going to be able to maintain the 25% reserve?
Commissioner, the budget that you will see this evening uses some of those reserves to balance for 2021. Or that is, that, I should say, that is one option. So currently, we sit it right at 25, a little over 25%. If we were to use some of those reserves to balance for FY 2021, you would not have a 25% reserve at this moment. Granted, we still have this year we're in to finish. So we don't know where we'll end this current year because we're still watching sales tax numbers. So I think we are being very careful in watching what we have right now because the 25 might not be 25 when we get to these budget hearings. If we've had a deficit in the current FY 20. So we are watching the FY 20 to make sure that we still have 25% when we do get ready to make this, to implement this budget or adopt this budget for FY 21. So I will tell you, based on, based on the budget that you'll see this evening, when you have to set the proposed millage rate, there is some use of reserves to balance the FY 21 budget.
And any forecast is what that's going to look like, the balance of that reserve?
For, well, it's kind of hard. We're struggling right now trying to figure out what that's, how, what that will be. I will tell you that I've been updating you every month, and I will continue to update you every month as we get to September. So that in September, and I hope that when we get to the first public hearing, we will have some real-time numbers for you as of that moment. So that you can see, we've gone each month to let you know where you are. But I hope by then, to be able to let you know where we are. Because we still have sales tax following numbers. And, you know, we're hoping that it's not going to be as bad this month. But, so, but we'll be able to give you, definitely we'll be able to give you an answer of roughly estimated where we think we are in the current year so that you'll know for FY 21.
All right.
I know that Edward has mentioned in his presentations at City Council that we've curbed spending. You know, we're only doing things that are critical or that are half-tos, unless we're otherwise contractually obligated. You know, we're monitoring those revenues. That, those sales tax dollars are a huge impact to our overall general fund budget, huge. So as he presented before, I think the first meeting that we presented the sales tax numbers to you, we pushed capital projects back. We only are hiring essential or necessary positions. Cut spending departments. They're going to be cut off on August 20th, putting in purchase orders as we prepare for closing the fiscal year. So we're doing our best to monitor and try to do the best that we can as an administrative team to make sure that that hole doesn't get any bigger than it has to be. So there's still a lot of moving parts. And the revenue estimates, we're hoping to get, as he mentioned last night in the session, we're hoping to get those in the next few weeks. They said next week, but I highly doubt it. They're meeting on the 17th. So I highly doubt that we're going to get those revenue estimates next week, as we hope, so.
Commissioner Smith, if you could tell them that you like 15% better than 25%, we will make big gains.
So they're listening, all right. Sounds good.
Any other questions on finance before we move to utility billing?
I'm just thrilled that we were frugal enough to get to that point. So it's there now. And this is the type of situation that it is for. So again, I'm not going to be saying we have to stay there. You know, that's that place we always want to get back to. But thankfully, we have it to, you know, as we need to.
And let's pray that we don't have a storm. I saw all y'all knock last night, so knock.
Well, I need to brag on Edward here. I mean, we were, up until COVID hit, we were three million to the good. Between reduced expenses and increased revenue, we were three million to the good, which, God help us, had we not been in that position. Because we'd be, you know, we're still, you know, we're still a little, little less than 2 million into the good. But every month, we're losing ground because of, you know, the reduced sales tax. So I attribute about 90% of that to Edward's, you know, really being tight on, you know, hiring freezes and looking at every dollar we spend. And we're, I guarantee you, we're in as good a position as anybody, any city in Florida, you know, going through into March. And so we're all facing that, you know, the, you know, the challenges of, you know, greatly reduced sales tax, you know, going forward.
Yeah, you know, and I think a lot of times the public doesn't realize we've had an 84% hit in our tourism industry, which funnels to all of the cities, which is why we're lacking in that. So, yeah, I absolutely agree, and thank you.
And then utility billing. We have slight increases here in utility billing. Please note, in our professional services, and we have an increase of 10.2%. And that's attributable to, we entered into a new contract with our utility billing company that prints and sends our bills out last year, mid-year, I believe, April or May of 2019. So there was a slight increase in that pricing, which is the overall increase in professional services. You'll see some other numbers here going printing and binding. That's also a reflection of that INCO contract for our utility biller. And you see some decreases in office and operating supplies. Those are the most significant items there. For some reason, there was $1,500 in utility services. But we don't pay, out of UB, we don't pay any utility services for our building. And then we have, we never had fuel for our meter reader. So in the operating supplies, there's, for fuel and gasoline, there was 100%.
They're pretty much similar and in line with what they were last year. There is a significant change from 19. But as you know, last year, we moved legal, we moved property and casualty insurance to the legal so that it could be with risk. So that's why you see a change there. So no, not big, no big changes here.
Projection, what you're going to be presenting in our council meeting, we're about 1.9% off.
Correct.
Right. And so if you take, if you take that number, and if you were to fund that out of our unassigned general fund, that would take, and we're roughly at 25% now. So I'm just going to lay that number on the $51 million in expenditure that we're forecasting for next year.
Yeah, that works.
Again, ballpark.
Right.
So if you took that out and removed that, because at 25%, we would be at like 12.9% right now, roughly speaking, in our unassigned general fund. You take that 1.9% out, assuming that we fund it from there, and that drops you down to 10, 9 and some change, which would represent 21.3%.
Correct, that's about right.
So we'd still be north of 20% in terms of our unassigned budget. Then if you, then on top of that, and I just, I'm just, we're gaming it out, right? If we assume that we added four police officers or added Jamie's two positions, and you added another $700,000 in wages and costs and took that out, you're still at about 20% of your unassigned reserves as a percent of your expenditure. So I'm just saying, there's still some movement there to feel like we're still healthy in terms of our reserve balance. Because 20% at the end of the day, it's two and a half months' worth of expenditures that we would be able to pay versus 25%, which is three months. We're talking about a half a month difference here. And oh, by the way, future years are always going to go back and have an asterisk on this budget year to say, there was some pretty heavy COVID impacts. So just, it's food for thought and consideration as we, as we talk through it.
Right. And that's one way to look at it. I mean, there are a lot of options on the table. You can do a combination. You can do it like that. There's the, the only thing that I'm a little, that I would kind of warn you of is the FGFOA or the GFOA recommends that you do, that we say it about two months, which is about 17%. We live in an area that has storms. And so they say you should be closer to 25, not 17, if a storm comes. So the only thing I would say is just keep in mind, if we, if we deplete it down that amount and the storm comes and we need another 2 or 3 million out of there, we may not get that 2 or 3 million back for four or five years. And so you'd have that too. Granted, if we had the crystal ball and no storms coming, we'd be, we'd be great. But, but you're right, Commissioner, that, you can look at it that way. If you take it out, that you go down to about 20% and then...
Yeah, but also, we need to, I understand where you, you know, the numbers for this year. What I worry about is next year, if we're still down 25%. And here's what I worry about is the following, so not this budget, the 2021 budget, but the 2122 budget. We could theoretically be down some percentage of sales tax. But what I worry about in that year is also having a decrease in ad valorem. Because, you know, we're talking about, you know, commercial properties, retail strips. We're talking about office, you know, where you're, they're paying their full freight of property tax. And if all of a sudden, you know, the office building is now worth 75% of what it was, or 80% or 90%, there's a good chance that our ad valorem in 2122 is going to be lower or maybe flat. Which, you know, that helped, that made a million-dollar difference in our budget for this year, this, the new budget year. So we got a million-dollar bump in ad valorem because everything was, we were, you know, almost 8% increase in property values. What happens if that goes down or stays flat? Then there's the increases you need just for inflationary purposes and sales tax is not back to full, you know. I just think we've got to be extremely cautious this year. I mean, you know, because you just never know what's going to happen. If you get, if we get down to 18, 19%, and then we have another year that's even worse, which could very well happen, if ad valorem, you know, starts to tumble, we just have to be, you know, extremely careful with our reserves. I think, you know, if I knew it was one year, if we had a, we had a vaccine and vaccine solved it all, and Disney World was full, and everything was back to normal, that's one thing. But I think this is, it's going to be a multi-year reduction in sales tax. And I think some, either reduction in ad valorem, but for sure, at least a decrease in the increase. And so I just, you know, I just want to be very cautious.
Yeah, invalid points. I mean, so what is going to be the recommendation? Because I'm assuming you're going to come to with a recommendation, right? It's not just going to be, hey, council, what do you want to do?
Right.
So is it, is it going to be a combination of, a combination approach? Or is it going to be, hey, guys, we're 1.8 or 1.9 away. We need to further trim? Is it going to be, hey, let's use some trimming, let's use some reserves, let's use some millage? I mean, what's the general kind of approach that we should expect?
Well, and I think, and one of the things I think that I think my job is for you, I think is to give you all the information, the best possible information, good information. And I've tried to lead at this budget doing that, starting with where we are, where our reserve levels, where, what are the different, trying to hold back now and trying to save. And I will tell you, I'm working day and night trying to figure out, you know, where are we going to be in September? I'm hoping, I'm hoping when we get to September, it's better than what, you know, we, that we've, that we've held back and really been good here this year that we're in. And we can say, hey, here's some money that's going to roll over that we can use to help going forward. I think, I will tell you that, that I think my, the approach that I have or what you'll see tonight is that they're using, it's a, what you see in your packet tonight is, it's a combination. To balance the 1.8, there's a portion that comes from reserve, and there's a portion that can come from the millage rate. But we're working really hard with insurance rates, with health insurance, with everything, to try to see if we can't tighten it down even more to get it closer to that million-dollar number instead of the 1.8 number, as close as we can, so that we don't have to take as much out of the reserves if that's, if that's the route that we go. So it's a combination of both. And keep in mind that tonight, you set the proposed millage rate. You can go down, but you can't go up. So keep that in mind as you work through that. What we're setting tonight doesn't mean that's where we're going to land. We could be, we could trim a lot and come down and get in line with...
So I missed that part on the recommendation action, which I should have just naturally gone to, because that's the recommendation action. So it's almost like a, it's a split.
Yeah, so I, yeah, so I'm a split in hopes that, that...
And that's with no additional increases. So that's not adding four police officers, not adding...
Right, so...
No wish list.
Yeah, that's just flat.
Right. And I'll tell you, we are, you can ask the staff, we are beaten up, everybody's beaten up looking for everything they can. McKinley this morning is looking for the cops grant that, you know, we got, where we did not long ago, several years ago, that we were able to apply for the cops grant, and we were able to add them. And we defer some of that cost. They pay more of it upfront, and we pay it once they get to that five-year period, then it's all of ours. You'll see that tonight, that we had that cops grant, we're in the fifth year. So now we have to absorb those five that we had. We have full, we have the full cost in this coming year. So that's a hit to our budget this year. But, so we're looking at everything. We're looking at that, looking at insurance. Every day, we're, what can we do, where can we save? I think we've seen tonight, and as we've gone through these workshops, which has been great, there's some places where staff has said, you know what, I can, I can make it to the next year for this. I'm good, because I got this to take care of in this year, and I'll do that next year. So, and then again, I think it's critical, the streets fund, like I told you, is going to be the, that's going to be the toughest one. And you'll see tonight, the hit, that a little bit of a hit that it's taken because it gets money from the general fund. And I want to, I've heard you loud and clear on those street items. And I want to try to make sure that, from the street signs to the speed humps, to try to get some of those things in that we were, that we've talked about over the year that are important, to try to see how we can work those in so that we can, can at least do some of those things that we've talked about. So, so yeah, right now, it's a combination of both. But I'd like to, you know, I think, I still think there's some savings and things like that. Trying to be creative, you know, with a lot of things. If I've got, if we've got staff that's willing to do something or help out here or there, that, you know, they can do those kinds of things and help us to get, to get through and see where we are halfway through the year, see where we are next year. And then, like we were saying, who knows what the ad valorem will be? Maybe it'll be better, maybe sales tax will recover better than we think, and we'll, we'll be in good shape for the next year. So we are hearing that the ad valorem could take a hit. We're hearing that from a lot of, a lot of places. That, you know, the ad valorem this year, the numbers were all in before COVID hit, so they were already set. So now they start to set the numbers for the next fiscal year, and they're taking all this into account.
Yeah, one other thing that we failed to mention, well, it's, because we're not, shouldn't, I guess it should be after 7 o'clock.
Yeah.
Well, another thing is, we, you know, we're putting the land up for sale on Sandpiper. So you could take, theoretically, could take the million dollars and either pay off, we've got one loan outstanding, it's about a million. You could take the money, pay off the loan. But I would, and that, it's fine, I think that's a good use of money. But I always say, then we're, we're still taking a million out of reserves. It may be not a cash reserve, but it's a reserve. I mean, that's, property has a value. So if we, you know, if we sell it for a million dollars, we are reducing our, and we use that to spend down, you know, a debt to get us to zero, which would reduce our expenses. We're still taking money out of reserves. It just happens to be, you know, land reserves, not, you know, cash reserves. But, I mean, that's another, another option that, you know, we're hoping to have the bids in by early September.
Yeah, I think yes. It'll be before the budget time.
Definitely within the next fiscal year. And then we're also hoping to sell the airport, which, that would be another habit. I mean, that's more of a cost savings than it is a profit center. But, you know, if we could, you know, make that happen in the next fiscal year, it'd be something else that we've got to play with.
There's a lot of time between now and September. So hopefully, things are, we're, we'll get better projections, and we'll have some better savings when we do these bids for insurance. And we'll have some more creative things that we can bring between now and then and can see where we land. But, but this is where we are currently with kind of the status quo and making sure that we keep those things, that keep the staff that we have and keep those service levels and everything where they are. So...
I think we need to give ourselves enough of a buffer to work with. Like you said, we can trim down, we can't go up. So because of everything like it is, we need to be ready to make those decisions and then be as frugal as we can.
Yep. Well, I don't know if there's really, if there's nothing else we can, got to wait till 7 to start the commission.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll close.